And recording. So Jerry, I'm going to share my screen and I'm going to pull up the agenda hopefully. Can you all see that?
No.
Oh. I'll see if I can write but.
No, okay. No.
That's not the agenda.
That's.
There it is, okay.
We have your agenda now, but not you. Okay, we have you too.
Okay. You have in court, okay.
All right.
Okay. So, okay. Shows the meetings canceled. Oh.
Jerry, would you like to call the meeting to order?
Uh, Jerry Fugic, uh, I called a meeting of the Yom Planning Commission to order. It's at four nineteen on July the twentieth twenty twenty. Uh, could you do a roll call please?
Uh, yes, Ann Warman, are you here?
I'm here.
Jerry Fugic.
Here.
John Thompson.
Present.
And that's all I have for right now, Bob Howard is trying to get logged in. Hopefully he can be here soon. John Graver is at a doctor's appointment and requested to be excused. Oh, we can't do motions, so we can't excuse him. Hopefully Bob will, Bob will get on board and we can actually continue with the business. So, um, with that, we can't approve the minutes either because we don't have a form.
Okay.
I will continue on just to keep us going. Um, I've received no public communications, so I can jump into the 2020 Capital Facilities Plan update.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the next two. So here's the staff report for the Capital Facilities Plan. And as you may remember in the past, we've all, we've been through this a few times. The Growth Management Act requires that we update our capital facilities plans. Capital facilities is the infrastructure that supports the city and it's part of our comprehensive plan. However, the Capital Facilities Plan includes a table of projects that need to be done and planned for in the next ten years. And then again, in the next twenty years. So the table that's attached to my staff report, which I'll jump to very quickly, has a list of projects. What we did this time is Public Works and Engineering and Planning got together. We went through all of the city's system plans, our parks plan, our transportation plan, the downtown transportation strategy that we just completed, the water system plan, the general sewer plan and the store and a stormwater management plan that was just created for the city in 2016. When we looked at these lists, we brought in all the projects that were missing. We got to remove one that was completed. And then we went through all of the projects as a whole and divided them up to which ones we believe that we could possibly achieve in the next ten years and move some items over to the twenty year plan. With this list, once we go through it, what we'll do is where I'm setting up a webpage on the city's web website to allow the public to be able to provide comment. And, um, we will hold a public hearing at your next meeting in August. So that would be August seventeenth. And with that, I'm not sure exactly how that's going to go, but hopefully we'll be a little more on board with the virtual meeting to be able to hold the public hearing. Once a public hearing is held and you review any comments and suggestions from you as a commission and the public, then we'll forward a recommendation to City Council to update the Capital Facilities Plan. Any questions so far?
Uh, can you, have you emailed that these documents to us?
They were all part of the Planning Commission agenda that was emailed out to you and the agenda's on our website. So the agenda, minutes and.
Neither one of. Neither John nor myself received it.
Well, maybe we didn't. I didn't look at my computer this morning, so.
Well, we just got, I'm on my computer and I usually check it several times today.
This was sent last week.
It was last week that it was sent.
Okay, I'll take a look again.
And I can absolutely resend when the meeting's over so that you have it again.
Yeah, please, please do that. And I'll print out a copy and then I'll print out a copy and give one to John.
Okay. So what we did and I, hopefully I caught everything that we updated. But I just wanted to kind of go over a few things that are new on this list that were not on here before. And these are a lot of the park projects that came with the most recent park plan update. I also updated a few numbers like the amount of acreages needed in the next ten years and then the next twenty years. But it also includes, um, moving the Yom Prairie Line Trail to Roy. It wasn't a transportation project down here. We moved it up and then we added the, um, capital facilities that were in the park plan. For the transportation projects, we went through and we either updated amounts. We kept a few of these items have been on the Capital Facilities Plan for quite some time. And then when we get down here to the Second Street improvements and down here to the, to the Second Street here, these ones have all been added. And this is from the Downtown Transportation Strategy or the Downtown Corridor Plan that we just updated and adopted by council.
Yeah.
Are we still good?
Still good.
Okay.
Yeah.
For water projects, um, well, wait a minute here. The, um, to the, the large ones that we're working on in the water system plan, our water rights mitigation and our southeast Yom Reservoir, that's going to be out by Walmart. And then we combined many of the items that were on before, they were called transmission names, one, two, three, four. We combined a lot of those and just considered them distribution system projects because those actually are picked out and by the greatest need at any given time. The water reclamation projects, which is our sewer treatment plant. This is the, we kept the collection system upgrades, but we've included some of the more recent projects that have been updated through the most recent review of the water reclamation facility. And these projects are now being reviewed by council as we go. We also have a new stormwater management plan and list some items where the city stormwater systems need updated. These were added here. So I'm going to jump forward. Oh, one more thing, the wayfinding program, signage program is also from the downtown transportation strategy. So some of the other items that were here, the long range for the parks, I updated the amount here based on the recent park plan. But the transportation projects, many of these were on the ten year plan before, but got moved over to the twenty. And some of the downtown transportation strategy, transportation improvements that were listed were also more long term and they were added to the twenty year lookout. When we did this, when we had cost estimates to update, we did update the cost amount. There were so many changes and so many of these projects moved around this document that the track changes became very confusing. So having the cross out, strike out and underline was, was way more confusing to look at than this. But I certainly can show you what we did there. I need to point out a mistake that I found, um, in the, the long range. This is our twenty to thirty, twenty year plan. This park projects, this is a title bar that needs to be deleted because parks.
Oh.
Because the parks project is up here above transportation. So when we come down here, these are supposed to be water projects. So here's where a lot of the transmit, main transmission, main information, long range planning for water, long range planning for our sewer system. There are, there were no long range stormwater projects. And then we moved a new city hall to the far out twenty year plan because we've just moved into the, the current city hall building. And then the rest remains unchanged. So it's, it was kind of confusing when we went through it, but we did spend a lot of time. We got a lot of good input from Public Works on the projects that we felt were something that either was most important to get done earlier or looking at some of them that we moved to the twenty year were the ones that we just knew we can't do everything that's needed. So we had to move some of the items to the longer range planning. So that's what this list is. Once you have an opportunity to look through it, if there's questions you have about any one, for most of the projects, I can show you in the transportation system plan, the downtown corridor plan, the water system plan and a capital facilities plan that our Public Works, their active projects are looking at, I can show you what they are.
Okay. Sounds good.
You said there's going to be a website with all of this on it for being able to put comments on, Tammy?
Yes.
Are you going to send a, a link to that website or should we just go to the city website and look around?
I will send a notification to you all through my email that the site has been uploaded. It's being worked on now. Um, I sent a draft in and, and our public communications is looking at it to get that updated. So as soon as it's on there, I'll let you know that it's been updated. It'll also have a link that people can comment on the questions.
Okay.
So I know it's a lot of names and a lot of numbers right now, but I wanted to get it before you, let you have time to look at it, get it out so the public knows that we're reviewing it and has an opportunity to see it. And then as we're going forward and we're finding what works and doesn't work for this virtual meeting, how we will hold the public hearing when we get that figured out.
That sounds good.
Okay. Sounds good.
So that's all I have for the Capital Facilities Plan update. Jerry, do you want to move on to subcommittee reports?
Uh, let me see your screen. Yeah, subcommittee reports. Do we have parks, I guess?
Parks has been meeting a couple of times. Why? I guess there is a lot that's happened since the planning commissions met. We've, we now have a new chair for the Parks Advisory Board and that's Sandy Hanson. And I'm vice chair. And Cecilia Jenkins resigned. All of that happened within a week or so of when the virus hit. So we, a lot of things scrambling all at once. But the gist of where we are is there are no public functions. So no major functions in the parks, in the city park this summer. And at present, we're in a wait, wait and see state on whether there's going to be Christmas in the park. So. That's, that's where we are. Oh, but one other thing is there's the, the project for the Yom Prairie Line Trail extension to Roy. The city of Yom is in process. Moving forward with requests for an RCO grant, which is a state level grant to be able to extend the trail from the end of the, where the trail is right now on the Prairie Line Trail, right next to the Centralia Power Canal, across the Squali River, just across it, just across the bridge. And so that's from what Grant just told me earlier today, it's going quite well. There, we've submitted the, the application, that application is in review. And there's a technical review just completed and he said it was, it was well received. So there's another part of that project, which is the Pierce County side. And there's a trails group out of Pierce County that's working with the city of Roy that's engaged with the, um, federal parks. That is the National Parks that's supporting doing the conceptual, that is conceptual plan that gives you all of the, the write-up that you need to be able to say, why do we need this trail the rest of the way? And that write-up is, um, going to be done, predicting that it'll be done by the end of the year for the remainder of the trail. That's just the conceptual write-up, that's not building.
You didn't show that number. It's just, I mean, email links.
And. That's.
Did Bob Howard get in? Did how, Bob Howard get in?
No, Bob has not arrived.
Okay, because I show five participants. Yeah, but you wouldn't, you're, you're part of my number.
Is Grant still on? Maybe. Oh, we have one, oh, Bob, he, he was in as an attendee. Now he's here. Welcome, Bob.
Yeah, because it shows five and then plus one would be John.
Time to turn on his speaker.
Yes, Bob, you have to unmute yourself.
Sound better?
Now we can hear you.
Okay.
He's here, he's here. I'll turn it back over.
So now we could approve the agenda and approve the minutes.
We can.
So I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
John Thompson, I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Opposed, motion carried. Uh, now I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last Planning Commission meeting.
I move to approve the minutes that are listed on our agenda. It's January, February and March, um, minutes.
John Thompson second.
Can we have a discussion?
Uh, just, just.
If, I might just clarify for the record that there are January twenty twenty meeting was a retreat. There were no minutes taken. And then February through June, we did not have meetings. So the minutes that are being approved today are the December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen minutes.
Thank you for that clarification. I, I failed to see that, so thank you. So I, I move that we approve the December two thousand nineteen minutes.
John Thompson, I second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Minutes approved. Now, do we have any more sub, sub? Okay, we'd like to excuse John Graver for his, because of his doctor's appointment.
I move that we excuse John for today due to an excused absence.
Okay, I have a second. Okay, John Thompson's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed, motion carried, John's excused. Okay, I think we're, do we, are, do we have any other subcommittee reports? Hearing none. Um, and is there, Tammy, is there any other business that we should bring forward at this meeting?
Um, what I, what I would like to do is chat with you, Bob, maybe via telephone and tell you what the Capital Facilities Plan entails so that, or you can watch the meeting when it's posted on the website and hear as well what I said during the open meeting. And I'd like then to be able to get information out to Carlos Perez and Floyd Sheldon, who are not here with them, not in the meeting today. And then also watch your emails for the notice when the website is updated with this website or pardon me, with this link. And then I will try to make sure that for the public hearing, what, if we're doing it virtually, how we can all get on and be prepared prior to the meeting so that we can try to prevent some of these technical difficulties.
And Tammy, might I suggest that you give an update about general city, what we've been up to since it's been so long since the planning commission's been together?
I can do that if the commission would like to hear.
Please do it.
Yeah. Well, since I've been working at home, I don't know what's going on in the city. But everybody, the, all city functions have been going very well. Our plenty, our Public Works crew is out working, keeping on top of everything. Our, they're also moving forward with a lot of the capital facilities projects, especially for the water reclamation facility. City Hall is open where we have our customer service team there. Ashley and Michelle are covering the front desk. Shield, safety shields are up and masks are required. We have our utility billing clerk, which was our administrative assistant down at Public Works. She's moved up to utility billing clerk. We have a new administrative assistant at the police department. And in the next couple of months, we'll have a new Public Works assistant down at Public Works. Finance has been on a roll. They've been in and out of the office working. City Council's been moving forward with all of their meetings and getting all their work done. The city received COVID funds, which they chose to give much of it back to the community through grants. So all of the COVID funds they put aside for that, businesses in town did apply and receive funds from there. Also money was donated, correct me if I'm wrong, Grant, but money was donated to the, is it the Together Funds?
The Yom Community Relief Fund, which Together operates.
Okay. I knew Together was in there somewhere. For community development, we have got, I'm working from home. I've been holding pre-submission meetings virtually, sent out, you should have gotten notices via your email that sent out approvals for development. Building Department is doing all of their climate review from home and then also coming into town and doing personal or physical inspections. Our engine, city engineer is working from home as well as going into the Public Works Department a couple of days a week and keeping everybody on track there with our project reviews and the city projects that are going on. What else, Grant, what am I missing? Our IT department has awesome, they got us all set up so that we can work from home. They were prepared before this happened, so we were able to transition pretty smoothly. Some of us have slower internet, so we just do what we can do, but we are able to get the job done.
And generally speaking, you know, I just will tell you all that I'm very proud of the peeps in the community development department for, basically we were closed for a week and then hit the ground running from home and have been able to provide what is effectively full service to our customers since then, using our new tools. So they've done a great job and really have proven the worth of telework and made a, a good impression on the, the mayor and the city administrator on how much can happen from, from home and how disciplined they are. The other, the other thing is what I've noticed in the last week or two is things are, are rapidly returning to normal from, uh, people looking into projects. Tammy's done a number of pre subs and virtually, but we're doing them and she's getting busier and busier with that stuff. So, uh, from a economic standpoint, we were positioned very, very well to weather the storm here. If you look at our demographics, it's a lot of state workers, a lot of JBLM folks and a lot of JBLM retirees and very stable income and very, uh, very much, they, they maintained their work throughout the, the COVID crisis. And our sales tax for, we just received it for the month of May, which is in the first full month of, or April, I guess, for the first full month of the pandemic and the stay at home order. And we were actually about forty five thousand dollars ahead of this time last year and about fifty thousand dollars over our projection. So, um, if you think about it with our business community, we've got a strong and a lot of local businesses, but a lot of them were open. All the restaurants were doing really well during this time period. And then Safeway, Tractor Supply and Walmart are the big part of our retail sales. And as I've said all along, toilet paper is taxable. So we're, we're actually in a much better position than many other jurisdictions like Olympia and Lacey, who really did take a significant real, uh, sales tax loss. But, so we're, we're looking good and, and, um, you know, I'm just really proud of everybody and all the staff for, for keeping things going. So thank you all.
I'm, I'm, as a staff member, been very thankful to be able to have the, the capability and the technology to be able to keep doing this and the city making it a point to make sure that staff has a job and work to do and to make that a priority as we got through this. So, yeah, it's been really good.
Well, thank you very much. The, the information you provided and Grant provided was very insightful to us. We have a better feel for what's going on and thank you for all your hard work.
It's been fun dealing, um, when this first hit, with a lot of the businesses trying to figure out what they could do, especially the restaurants. How could they get through this and how can they provide the service that they were allowed to do? And then once we moved into phase two, the phone calls and the emails are coming. Um, we do a lot of pre subs either virtually or just a lot of email and phone calls back and forth, being able to just talk through the issues so that they know whether they want to move forward or not. There's been a couple of residential subdivision, pre submission meetings and a couple of commercial pre submission meetings. So people want to move forward.
It's good, this is good.
Yeah.
It's a real good sign.
Well, thank you for all, all your hard work. Anything else that we need to be brought before the committee? Uh, hearing I would entertain a motion to adjourn if there is nothing else.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Need a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'll see where I, my, uh, document is.